It is seven PM. I will call the September seventh, twenty twenty-three study session to work. We start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. Ms. Shous is going to read the land development for us.
The Westeran Oakway Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region and that this school district building sits on the homelands of the Anaduaga of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn and live.
Thank you very much. First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no changes.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Sun. Thank you, Mr. Fett. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All those in favor? That is seven zero, Ms. Lustig. Next on the agenda is public comment. We do not have anyone sign in for public comment this evening, but we do want to remind the public that you're welcome to attend our meetings. We're here every other Thursday, pretty much, and we have public comment at each of those meetings. Next is the approval of the minutes. May I have the recommended resolutions?
Be it resolved that the minutes of the August tenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education workshop and meeting be approved as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Thank you, Mr. Connor. Any questions or comments on the minutes? These are the minutes from August tenth, as Mrs. Lustig said, and all those are favorable. That is seven zero. Next is the report of the superintendent, Dr. Johnson. How are the children?
The children are well, my friend. I appreciate you asking that. And there's a story behind that that I'll get to here in a minute. Let me queue this up. So I had emailed the board and I just asked if it would be okay if we recognized our August graduates tonight. We had one graduate that was planning to be with us, and so we were recording them and their family. Unfortunately, something came up and they weren't able to make it. But I still do want to just recognize them for their achievement, something obviously they've worked very hard to do. So with that, I just want to recognize Selisa Rose and Carmelo Newton for their graduation this August after completing their requirements over the summer. And working with Superintendent Zip Glaughlin, we are going to organize a time to present them with their diplomas, she and I, and we'll get some good pictures and appreciate your support with that. Okay? Excuse me, I butchered. Her first name is Selica. My apologies. Selica Rose. So Mr. Metris had asked me, how are the children? And again, there's a little story behind that because this summer we attended a retreat with the Warner School, and it was something that they had introduced to us as a question. And working together with our administrative team after that, we decided, you know what? In Western Rhetico, where all means all, you know, that is a call to action that obviously we could connect with. And we modified that slightly and just kind of added, how are all the children? So I want to read something to you real quickly that I write on opening day to our staff as to why this is meaningful to us. Okay, I'll try to keep this brief, but I think it's important. So they introduced us to this tradition with the Maasai and gave us background information. It says, "Among the many fabled and accomplished tribes of Africa, no tribe was considered to have warriors more fearsome or more intelligent than the mighty Maasai. It's surprising to learn the traditional greeting passed among the Maasai warriors," which was Kessariyan and Jerity. Again, I'm sure I just butchered that, but that's the best that I can offer. The warriors would say this to one another every time they met. And what it meant was, how are the children? It is still the traditional greeting of the Maasai, acknowledging the high values the Maasai place on the children's well-being. Even warriors with no children of their own would always give the traditional answer, all the children are well. This meant, of course, that peace and safety prevail. The priorities of protecting the young and the powerless are in place. That the Maasai people had not forgotten their reason for being, their proper function and their responsibilities. There's a bit more, but I'm going to kind of skip down to the end because I think it relates to us. So at the end it says, "What would it be like if the president began every press conference, every public appearance by answering the same question? And how are the children, Mr. President or Madam President? If every governor at every state had to answer the same question at every press conference? And how are the children, Governor? Are they well? Wouldn't it be interesting to hear their answers? What would it be like if every superintendent began every board meeting by answering the same question? And how are the children? If every director, principal, assistant principal, and every leader in school and district had to answer the same question every day? And how are the children? Are they well? Wouldn't it be interesting to hear their answers?" So that's going to promise throughout the year. I know that Ms. Miga is going to be using that as a call to action consistently throughout the year with our staff, and it's something that I will incorporate into my reports with you. So the answer today is they're well. And here's a few pictures from our opening day with staff. I just want to send out a couple of special recognitions. Number one, to the food services. We had a new director at the high school, Lindsay Doyle. She's stepped up. She's doing the interim work right now as we fill that position. And there was a couple of snap moves with timing of deliveries. Handle did well. It was a fabulous event, and I just want to thank them so much for supporting that. They do that every year and support us financially and provide that for staff. I also want to, we have Rich here with us today, but you know, he gets there early in the morning. They help make sure that all the sound and all the systems are ready to go and handle any technology throughout the day. It was just fabulous. And the other people that we recognized that day were our buildings and grounds, specifically our cleaners and custodians. Having been here for five years, and our buildings always are well-prepared for opening day, I thought this year they were listening. It was fabulous to see the amount of work that happened over the summer and especially over the last couple of weeks. So just hats off to them. And then finally, we recognize our clerical at large because, you know, when our buildings, they're the first line. They're the first interaction with people as they come in for whatever reason, you know? And they're warm, they're welcoming, they're steady, they're helpful, you know, they're insightful. They're just bountiful with their knowledge, and so I just want to recognize all of our clerical across the district. And of course, because of you, we were able to recognize an outstanding clerical with us, and she was able to be with us that day, and so we gave her the special resolution that day. Myself and Mr. Metris, I don't think you came up, but we were able to do that, so. Next, we have the drum ensemble. And I just want to send a shout out to Anna Conti from Rogers Middle School, Kelly Petro from Iroquois Middle School, and Patty Welch from IHS, and the West Rhetico Foundation for supporting that. They provided the funding for that way back with one of the grants. And so to have them there on that day to interact with the staff and also showcase what they have built and evolved with the children was just phenomenal. And they called people up to stage. It was very interactive. You can see some pictures up there where the staff kind of got up and they did almost like the wave, but they were just extremely energized. And we passed the microphone around to the kids, and every single kid said, you know, going into day that they want to make sure that we have a drum ensemble at day. So it's kind of a funny thing, but obviously we're going to be starting a drum ensemble at day. So getting to today, it was kind of a wet one this morning, but thanks to Mr. Gudronica and his staff. We were able to capture a lot of pictures from around the district. You see some here. And again, out of the five years that I've been here, despite the rain, it was just a fantastic, really seamless opening to the year. Lots of smiles. I mean, if I were to gauge the opening's quality based on my son, I had a quick conversation with him as he was coming home with his mother, and I said, hey buddy, how was the day? He said, best day ever. So I won't tell you why, but I will because I'm sure you're wondering. He loved the new toys. In the second grade classroom, they're better than the first grade toys. And he has specials today. They were really wonderful, but he thought his teacher was fabulous. So it was kind of cute. So next, I just want to give you a few updates from across the district. So unexpectedly, the IPD informed us yesterday that they were going to add two additional staff to the main campus at Cooper Road. So although the traffic got backed up today, they had rather than two crossing guards there, they had four. And that's going to be something they have in place moving forward. So just appreciate their partnership. I gave you folks a recommended resolution in your administrative section or docs. And we were informed over the summer of a social media class action lawsuit, and we were invited to participate in that. And so this is going to be a very similar process to what we experienced with the Jewel lawsuit, where school districts from across the nation are invited to participate in this. And it's really to address the harm and the disruption that has happened to our students, to our children's, the disruption in our schools based on the social media and some of the lack of the guidelines and parameters and oversight with those platforms. And so the attorneys who recommended that to us, I believe it was Fiorenza, they went through that and they said, really, there's no liability to the district, and they recommended that we do it. So I pass that along to you with the recommendation from myself and working with our team, and we do join onto that. And you have the materials in your teams to review what you can. And if you have any questions, pass them along to me, and I'll do my best to answer those. But if everybody's on board, we will present that resolution at the next meeting because we have to return that by the end of September. So working with Ms. Kramer, we are launching our policy review committee. And so this was something based on our board goal last year to just set up a schedule, a mechanism to review our board policy manual at large, which we scheduled that out over a couple of years. And what I'm doing is I'm requesting one to two members to serve on that. It'll be an obligation of probably one meeting per month, okay? Once I have those people identified with you, pass those along to Michelle. I'll also be serving on that, and we'll get that started and we'll follow the calendar that I shared with you at a previous meeting, okay? So I'll let you folks discuss that and just get back to me with the one to two people, okay? Just as an FYI, we have our, we have our ride from missing and exploited children next week. So this was postponed from the spring, so we're working with the schools that are impacted by that. And really, it's going to be the Iroquois campus because they're going through Coldbrook, I believe Seneca, I think Briarwood, the Goupah de Main campus, and then the rounds of Sauvignon. So it's going to be pretty tight with departure, but we're going to make it happen. So just wanted to make you aware of that, and we're working with the IPD. Over the summer at the August workshop, where we gave critical updates from across the district, one of the things that we had planned was to discuss budget priorities with you for the upcoming budget process. So for the twenty-three, excuse me, I said twenty-three, twenty-four. It's really twenty-four, twenty-five, my mistake, out of the slides. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget priorities. So I gave you a survey, and I've seen that a few people have filled that out. So please take a moment and fill that out. It was one of my last updates through email. If you have any questions, reach out, and then I'll bring that information back, and we can discuss that and just finalize those so that we can use that and apply that. Last thing is just making you aware that September eighteenth through twenty-third is homecoming week. So we'll be issuing you all the updates so that if you want to attend any of those events, you can do that. And with that, I got to apologize. When I was announcing the veteran clerical that we recognized, I had a total mind lapse. Linda Webb. I'm like, why can't I think of his name? But Linda Webb, she's fantastic. So she joined us, and it was really just a heartfelt moment. So any questions?
Just to tell you, you know, your second slide for the August graduates, I really want to make, and then hopefully pass on speaking hopefully for the board, that thank you to the IHS staff that really stuck with those students that maybe needed that little extra push. It's important, and we said, you know, when we said all means all, whether that means a summer program to have these two children be able to finish, or even a student come back for a fifth year, if that's what it takes. They do a great job over there monitoring that through the year, supporting these students, and it's a really important milestone in their life. So if you just pass that to all that staff over there, at least for me, it's a problem. I want to see that that happens.
Definitely.
Very well said, John. Anything else for Dr. Johnson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is report of leadership staff business and product committee. Dr. Johnson?
Mr. Brennan, do we have any updates?
I just very briefly, our external audits in the waning moments of Friday unless documents requesting, and we are scheduled for our first audit committee. It's under, it's bottom as well, but it's on October fifth at six o'clock proceeding.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Brennan? All right. Next is report of leadership staff instruction, and it is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three data book presentation. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Miga, who's got a guest with us, Kelly Santora. So Ms. Miga?
Yes, and before we get to our data book presentation, just as part of my regular instruction update, thank you. I just wanted to give, as today is officially now into the school year, we are out of the summer. I wanted to give a quick update on the programs that we ran this summer because we had quite a few and they were great. So first, I'm going to start with some of the programs that were held at the high school or for our high school students. So we had our Summer Academy, which is for our special education students, that was held at IHS. We had twenty-four students attend, and eighty-seven point five of those students who attended earned credit. So we had fourteen students who earned credits in two courses and seven who earned credits in one course. And we also had five students within that group that needed Regents exams for course credit, and all were earned within the PO. And as you all know, we also held actually here on district, the Bosie Summer School. So this is something, if you've, you know, been on the board for a while, we used to hold an in-house summer school program, but have transitioned to the Bosie Summer School program. I think that was shifted about four or five years ago. And so from our district though, so there's more students who attended that program, but from our districts, we had fifty-eight students attend. We had seventy-nine point three percent of those students earned credit. Thirty-six earned a Regents exam credit with an appeal, and twenty-one earned a Regents exam with a sixty-five or higher. And we wanted to pull some of that data out for you because that is something we're closely monitoring is this August Regents exams. They were the last exams that fell under the appeal, which allows students to make a superintendent's appeal if they score between a fifty and a sixty-four. So obviously sixty-five or higher is the typical passing score. And so, you know, that's something we're closely monitoring because of next year at this time, you know, I know what the state will do, but next year at this time, this won't be in place for students. So that is something that we're going to make sure that we're really supporting them so that they are earning that sixty-five or higher on our Regents exams. Additionally, at the high school, I wanted to also bring out a couple of the programs that were put in place with some of our stimulus funds. First, and these are really, these are a little bit different than maybe what we typically had in place because they really focused on providing, instead of some of the shoring up of gaps and supporting students who are working towards credit recovery, what these high school programs really focus on were providing extra opportunities to students so that they could access some coursework in the summer that would help them be better positioned for better access to some other courses during the school year. So first, this is the Algebra II Advanced to AP Calculus BC. This was a second year that we have done this with stimulus funds, where students, we had eight students who attended. They engage in a two-week course to prepare for the calculus level math, and it allows students who maybe would have some conflicts in their senior year actually be able to now access that AP coursework. So opening the door for some of our students who, without this summer support, this two-week support provided by Mark Crawford at the high school, would be able to now access that. And a new piece that we added this year with some of our stimulus funds was Participation in Government and Economics Summer Institute. And this was actually for five students who received their credit for pagan econ through their summer work. Jamie Armstrong and Todd Fleming made sure that the rigor of the course was that to match of what happened during the school year. And this again allowed for some students to access some coursework and complete it during the summer that will open up their schedule for different electives and some further opportunities during the school year. And we thought it was important to note that all five of the students who completed it over the summer, they also then completed the requirements for the seal of civic readiness, which you see the students doing those presentations in the photos on the slide. So we're really excited about some of those pieces that we've been looking at more recently. At the K eight level, we continued with our typical summer lab programming. And so summer lab program, programming is primarily for general education students who have areas of need, so they're usually at the tier-two or tier-three level with the help of Ms. Santora, who really helps to coordinate this along with many of our teacher leaders. We have worked, as you can see, able to support quite a large number of students, particularly the grades entering one through six level. But first up, we had our kindergarten boot camp, which is, we had seventeen students attend. So these are students that, based on the screenings that were held in June for kindergarten for this school year, we had seventeen students come in with some of our very highly trained staff. And basically, we kind of call it the kindergarten boot camp because it's like, what are the skills that they need to kind of help them get ready for kindergarten? So we saw some of those skills. They needed a little bit of support in June, and they did a wonderful job. And they're all, you know, had really successful days today, so we're excited for those students. Summer Lab is a program, again geared for grades entering one through six. And these, we primarily focus on math and ELA support, again, students who are identified through intervention process at the end of that year and then invited. At the building level, we had two hundred and seventy-four students attend across all of those grade levels for both math and ELA. So we're very excited about that. And then at summer, we do a summer lab session, a two-week session for grade seven and eight. And we've adjusted that a little bit over the years so that, especially as we moved at the seven, eight level to Humanities STEAM, we adjusted our summer lab program to match that. So they engage in a little bit more project-based learning versus just some of the review of the skills needed. And we had seventeen students attend that. So just want to recognize Jen Bonafanti, who was a teacher leader who works closely with kindergarten boot camp, in addition to the teachers who worked that, Maria Benka, who helped to be the teacher leader for our summer lab. And then we had a lot of different teachers who maybe STEAM or Humanities wasn't their primary content area, but really stepped up to help those as well. So Lisa Guido, for example, supported Humanities. And so we were just really excited to have our students engaged, and of course, as everyone does. We continued this summer our K-12 intensive tutoring program, which was something we put in place through our stimulus funds. And so again, you can just see the breakdown about how many students that we supported at each grade level banned through this work. And it's important to note at seven twelve, this was tutoring where we had our tutoring center working with some students who maybe had a continued suspension through the summertime to make sure that they stayed on track for the return to school. We also supported another group of students, again, really working towards that credit recovery. So for example, if they had three or more courses in which they needed to work with credit recovery, they got this additional tutoring as well. Our extended school year and tutoring, a lot of things kind of sound the same, but this is actually for special education students in particular. So primarily, we have K, really, it's primarily at the K-six level where the majority of these students are enrolled. We did have one seven twelve class. But you can see we had seventy-three students enrolled in extended school years, so there's special education students who qualify for summer supports. And so the majority of those students were in twelve-one-four or twelve-one-one full or half-day classes. We had sixty-seven attend from the seventy-three that were enrolled in, to do so, sorry, move my own slide forward. And then we also had fifty-five students who maybe didn't qualify for the special program, like a twelve-one-one or twelve-one-four class, but they engaged in fifteen hours weekly of tutoring. And we had, well, we had fifty-five students enrolled, and I believe I should say fifty-five attended, not fifty-six, because it was an extra kid. So it's my type of. We also thought it was kind of interesting, though, to note and pull out for you just the number of students that we have enrolled in out-of-district programming through the summer. So these are students that qualify and through the CSE process are placed in out-of-district, placed in this during the school year. And so they qualify then for some of the summer support. So you can see there's just a lot going on in student services during the summer, which we support. You know, even if they aren't necessarily with us in district, we still support them quite heavily at our out-of-district programs. So overall, you can see we really supported quite a few students, which is our goal every summer to make sure we can fight summer regression as much as possible and provide services to all those who need it. So I just want to take a moment. I was able to mention a few of our staff, but there are many, many staff members, our directors, our teachers, our teacher leaders, principals, who all helped to make all of these programs run in the summer. So we want to just give a thank you to everybody because, once again, we felt like it was with a lot of different programming running for a really successful summer. So before we move to the data book, any questions or comments?
I just said, thanks for this great information. In the, I'll say it's like side, slides four and five.
Yep.
Can you just, like the kindergarten boot camp and the summer labs, what does that look like? Like, is it a half-day?
Yeah.
Like, what's the makeup of that?
Sure. So for kindergarten boot camp, it is a two-week program, and they are there from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. I'm looking at Kelly because she writes. Just correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, and so, and it's working with, we have three to four, depending on the day, staff members, kindergarten teachers, speech OTPT, work with the students, so they have realistic specific roles there. And then for summer lab at grades K through, or students entering grades one through three, they either attend ELA or math, and it is a two-hour, or it's, excuse me, it's an hour and a half block that students attend. So say they just attend ELA lab, they, for a two-week period, again, they attend for an hour and a half on a daily basis. And then at the upper grades, or excuse me, ELA and math is combined at the lower grades and lower elementary. And at the upper elementary, they're split into math and ELA, but with the same timeframes. We actually got some really good feedback, though, from parents about considerations for future years where maybe you have it be a Monday through Thursday program, but a longer stretch of time. Since that is a harder, like especially for working parents, that's a hard timeframe for an hour and a half to make sure you can get somewhere and then pick them up as well. So we're just taking in some great feedback. Again, thanks to Maria Benka, who helped a lot with that this summer. And she's always does a great job of soliciting some of the feedback. So that's generally what they look like.
That's, that's good. And then just a great number of students. Did we have, I think you kind of answered this, you took feedback about just the timing of it and not families not being able to support, I'll say, the timeframes or?
Yeah.
We had two hundred and seventy-four students, one through six, like, how many were, I'll say, I don't want to say flag, but were invited to come? And then how many, and we obviously had two hundred and seventy-four attend of that number. Like, are we getting like a some percentage, like a seventy percent response rate, I'll say, from the invite to actually participation in the program?
Yeah, we could get those numbers because we do track it. And we've tried it a couple. It's a great question because we have tried it a couple differently over the last few years, kind of, and solicited that feedback. But I will say, like, But I, I will say, like the, we went to, it was over a six-week period of time at one point, it was like every other day. And, but again, for the shorter period of time. And one of, one of the things we do want to consider is just the length of the time versus like, you know, it didn't really matter, it didn't seem to matter as much to the families, whether it's six weeks or two weeks. It was just like an hour and a half is hard. So that's something that we're gonna.
That's great feedback.
Yeah.
And then, when you said you would receive feedback from, was that informal feedback or did we have a formal feedback mechanism? So of the two hundred and seventy-four students, maybe their families, there could be multiples, whatever, number of families. Did we have like a formal survey, or you know, some quick little thing that they, they could fill out?
We did for those who attended, but it's, we, we haven't surveyed the families who, so we do a Microsoft form for those who attend and that's where you get the feedback. But for those who just say no, we haven't surveyed before, which might be a good place to get some more info.
Great.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys.
Last year, we had around a little over a hundred students participate in our one, or one-six lab, so we almost tripled.
Yeah, I remember last year, and we talked about this, so it seems like some change, or we did some outreach and it's working. Because it, it sounds like it's very helpful, I'll say, to keep those skills low. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else for us to speak on this? Thank you for all that information.
Great. And then with that, I'll invite my colleague, Mrs. Kelly Santana, our Director of Data Assessment and Interventions, to share with you and just go through briefly the data book, which I had shared with you at our office workshop, which is going to go a little bit deeper into some of the pieces.
Hello, how is everybody?
Good.
Great.
I got to spend some time with four-year-olds today, so it was great.
Third-year UPK program. So I know Ms. Mika had shared with you the really nitty-gritty data when she met with you in August. So I'm really going to focus on like, what are we going to do about it this year? So this is our blueprint from last school year. So our focus was really around culturally responsive pedagogy. We were really honed in on implementing the K-12 instructional model, building our curriculum templates. And we did a ton of curriculum writing last year and over this summer. So you'll see that highlighted through here. Last, last year, when I presented on the data book, I did introduce some new data that we haven't typically presented on in our data book. And that was around attendance and behavior. So I wanted to highlight that again this year. Last year, we brought it up because of COVID and the attendance being a concern and behavior being a concern. So I wanted to kind of give a, a state of where we are at this past school year after that. So as you can see through, from elementary and high school, we are starting to see a lower number of students at that chronically absent number, which is ten percent of school days or more. So only, we're now down to seventeen point five percent for our grades one through eight and twenty-seven point eight for our nine through twelve. We're not down to our pre-COVID years, but we are headed in a good direction. This continues to be a focus for all of our K-12 buildings. And you'll see our principals and assistant principals really emphasizing the importance of coming to school. And then again, our suspension data, so I shared this last school year and it was pretty, pretty high last year. So that was a focus for our principals and for our school teams to really hone in on providing some interventions for students' behaviors or social-emotional wellbeing, to hopefully bring down some of those numbers. Our suspension data does continue to remain high from last school year. But you will see that a higher number of students were suspended, but it was less number of days that students were suspended from last year. So we were around twenty-four hundred days that students were out of school suspended last year and we're down to two thousand and fifty this year. We also continue to see a disproportionate rate of our students of color, our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students that are being suspended at a higher rate than their, than their other peers in a typical, like that counterpart of subgroup there. So that continues to be an area of focus for our buildings as well. So what we're going to be doing about that this year is we introduced a new platform this year called Panorama. And it allows us to have nearly live data for what they call the ABCs, which is attendance, behavior, and coursework. And then that, all of that data feeds into Panorama from Infinite Campus, from our assessment platforms. So we're able to see every day and chart like which students we should be targeting and which students maybe their attendance is trending downward and that we should really hone in and give them some interventions. Also, knowing that our discipline data was an area of focus this past school year, we continue to look at that and really dig into what are some research-based interventions that we can put in place this year. So at the end of the school year last year, each building looked at their data and created a discipline action plan. And almost all of them included professional learning around distorted practices, getting more staff members TCI-trained, putting in some positive behavioral interventions. And then again, using Panorama just to monitor that behavior on a more, more, more frequent basis. I just wanted to show you what some of those reports look like from Panorama. So this is actually our behavior report from last school year. And you're able to look at it by, at the district level. So this is kind of a district view and there's a building view and then a classroom view. You can look at it by month, you can look at it by incident, you can look at it by, by demographic area. So every day, you can log in and see kind of the state of affairs in the district and in the buildings. And then this is the same for attendance too. So this is an example, this isn't our attendance report, but it's a snapshot of Panorama's example. So you can start to see the, like, the names populating down there, like, wow, this student hasn't been in school for quite some time. Or actually, this student wasn't attendance concerned, but they're starting to trend downward. So let's, let's put in some interventions for them. So that's what we're going to be focused on this school year for attendance and behavior. Moving forward with academics, as you can see, our June graduation rate was ninety-three point nine percent. Woo-hoo, and now we have two more to add to that number. For our K-eight data, our early literacy improvements, I know we, as you know, we implemented a new curriculum at K-two. And we are already starting to see dividends with that already from looking at twenty-one, twenty-two. All of those areas have improved dramatically, even though we didn't start implementing CKLA until November of this school year. So I'm really, I know a lot of us are really excited to see what it will look like starting from September of this school year. And then we did purchase grade three and four for CKLA this coming school year. So we'll start to see some improvements there, hopefully with our EAMS Web fluency. That has improved again, if you look at grades one and two, has gone up really nicely. Grades three through six is pretty stagnant, so we're going to hone in on some of those areas for this school year. If you're looking at I-Ready, we're seeing some slight improvements in that area for, for I-Ready reading portion. But looking at I-Ready math, this is one of the reports that you can pull out of I-Ready. And if you look at the pyramid that's on the left-hand side, that's from September. And if you notice the, the red number, I'm sorry, the pyramid on the right is from September. And if you notice that red box, those are the students that are two grade levels or below on their assessment. And if you look at how they performed at the end of the school year, we really need the red and the yellow a lot smaller. So really nice improvements for I-Ready math. Our intervention data, so I track how many students are qualifying for Tier Two and Tier Three services from the beginning of the year, in the middle, and then at the end. And I'm happy to report that for K-six math intervention data, we are able to dismiss seventy students out of services. And then, oh, sorry, I skipped one. And then for reading intervention data, we are able to dismiss eighty-six students out of intervention. So woo-hoo for all of those teams working together collaboratively to get students back in grade level. Our state testing data has not been released yet for ELA and math. We are counting the state, I won't, will we be released, but they won't tell us, they keep saying soon. But when they will, I'll make sure, I'll share that with Ms. Mika to report to you guys when they come out. We do have our grade eight science data and it's the exact same as it was last year. So we had seventy-six percent of our students passing our grade eight science test. There was no grade four science test because they moved it to grade five. So they don't want to test those same group of students two years in a row. So our grade four students last year will take the science test in grade five and it will stay there for, until they decide to change it again. All right, so some highlights there with the adoption of CKLA, we're still really seeing, seeing our early literacy scores improve. Really nice intervention data with dismissals. And our I-Ready math data shows some really nice improvements of, you know, shrinking those reds and yellows. Our continued areas of focus are, we still have one more year of some COVID intervention teachers that we have. We have three, so we're really utilizing them in a systematic way based on our end-of-the-year data to target those higher groups of students. And then utilizing Panorama, dashboards for academics and behavior and attendance to be, to really put together some tiny interventions for students. All right, so nine, twelve, again, there's our nice attendance, our graduation rate. For AP tests, you can see that we held pretty steady from last year. How many students were meeting that score of three to five on their AP assessments? And also pretty steady with our number of exams that were taken from last year to this year. But still, that's an excellent number of students participating in AP coursework and also taking that exam. So overall, I know Ms. Mika again went through these region scores with you. I think we improved from last year to this year on every single exam except for two, which were living environment, which, which still wasn't, which still wasn't that, that bad. And then global history, we went down by four percent, but every other one went, went up, so that was great to see. We did have the ELA eleven regions, which was a little different than how it normally has been. And then we also haven't had the US history test in quite some time too. As you can see, it was three years of exemption, so it's been a while since we've tackled that exam as well. So, sorry, so some celebrations, again, we're continuing to have our students access higher-level coursework, tackle those AP exams to gain, to gain some college credits. We also had some really nice scores, US history, global history, and English eleven. Some focuses will be geometry and physics. And then some things that were, were really important for those, those areas that we did really well on were some common formative assessments that were really tightly aligned to regions exams. So we're just going to double down on that and really spread it out into other regions areas as well. All right, and that's it for me. Any questions or comments?
John, I don't want to always go first. So I waited. Thank you for the data.
Yes.
Couple of questions on, with the recent, so our, our intervention data and for our tiered students and how we've done in the past and with recently in our onboard magazines. The Commissioner of Education passed a, I don't want to call it a law, ruling that school districts are allowed to use the June data to begin intervention services right away. Like we've always, we normally don't start that till October because we have to do the fall assessment and then place them. I wonder, are we planning to allow students to do that? Where we're going to be doing that intervention using the June data and then maybe some that test out will be, you know, moved to a different tier, but, or are we planning on the same way we did it last year?
So my, what my, so I meet with my intervention teachers starting tomorrow, Monday and Tuesday. We do some really in-depth PD, really targeting some of that data and those students and what, what are some type plans we could put in place for them. And then they're starting intervention services Wednesday. So they have to have their schedules to me by end of the day Tuesday and then they'll start on Wednesday.
So they're start the intervention push-ins or pull-ons?
Yes, yeah.
Wait, that's great.
Some of our buildings aren't having their official block start right away because they're using those strategically to build in front-loading some SEL lessons, which I think is a, is a great place in the day to be doing that. So they'll have, they might move their classes in, in that way, but they're going to be delivering social-emotional intervention lessons for September.
District-wide, by the end of September, we should be in the full assessment, I mean, mode? When we, Chris, you reported in the spring, you know, we don't usually start that till October because we needed that data in September and part of October to, I'll say, place it, you know, where this new education ruling says we can use the data from June. But we've seen some great, where you saw the two grades or less. You know, if we had students in June that were there, I'd be surprised if most of them didn't stay the same or.
Right, those are the kids that are starting on.
Those are the ones I'm wondering, are we getting right to them again in September?
Yes, yeah, those are the students they're starting with in September. So they have their, we have lists of students that are still qualifying for intervention in June and those are the students that they start with on Wednesday.
Then the second question is on the high school level. And, you know, I know it's just numbers, but some trending of, and geometry's always been a, it's one of these things that we grapple with. Was any changes made to the curriculum, any major changes? Because we were in the pushing, you know, high eighties, nineties and then we went into the sixties. But that was after the whole remote learning and everything, so there's, there's some understanding there. I'm just wondering, was there any changes in that time, Chris? Or is it pretty much?
Well, we moved to the next-gen standards. So there was at every, like in every content area, there was some shifting, but not huge shifts. But that is, like I know we've always worked with pretty much almost every team to work on the curriculum a bit, especially post, you know, the E-years where there was no regions given. But there hasn't been leaderships in the curriculum though.
Okay. And physics, same thing.
Mm-hmm.
I think that was it, I think I have one more question, but I can always, if I come up with anything else.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I was just looking at, thanks for all this data, by the way, it's great. But I was looking at our suspension data and for students with disabilities, does that count? Like are students that are in, in an outside placement?
So this data is specifically in district students.
So how would we, how would we find out the data on those students that are in those?
So we, we are not held accountable for those students because we don't track that. Because the, they're, wherever placement they're, they're at, that's how, they would, they would be the ones reporting the suspensions from that place.
Right.
So if they're at Bird Morgan, Bird Morgan would report, because they're the ones that suspended them essentially.
Mm-hmm, I see. Right, and they would be doing the progress monitoring.
Exactly, yeah.
It'd be interesting to know, I'm sure we could get that data.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
We have Amy reach out.
Mm-hmm. Partners.
In looking at the AP data, the number of exams that has fallen considerably, more so than enrollment at the high school level. What are, what are some of the drivers?
So we have, we would look at this last year because we did notice it dropped quite significantly. And we're working with, it seems that more students are, instead of taking AP, they might take a course that they'll get dual credit for. So they might opt for a dual-credit course. So if we combine those numbers, I bet you'd be around that, that same number. Because they're, they're continuing to find other courses that they can get that dual-credit for, because it really benefits our students. It's more of a guaranteed college credit versus, you know, I hope the college takes our three or four.
That's exactly.
Yes.
At least with my stu, my kids.
Yeah.
When they went through, that was part of it, is, you know, some colleges are, are not accepting threes anymore. They're like, you gotta have a four. So where you can do, I'll say, dual-credit through MCC, which is already approved college class and transfers just about everywhere.
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like an access or equity-related issue in terms of the cost to take the cap, the test or the dual-credit course.
We actually have a bunch of.
Yeah, I feel like, yes, we do pay for some of those.
Any other questions for Ms. Santana?
Thank you very much for this information. I find, oh, was it one of them?
No, it was a scale thing.
Okay.
Afterwards.
Oh, I was just saying, you pointed this at me. Was it me or John? I, I find the Panorama stuff really exciting. I'm excited to see how that rolls out and see, you know, to be able to react to that data in, in real time, I think is, is hopefully going to be a game changer for us, especially looking at some of these attendance numbers. Those are a little disconcerting, unsettling, terrifying, somewhere on that spectrum. John, you have a question?
Oh, no, I just, before Dr. Johnson, and that Panorama was another question that I couldn't remember. I couldn't, or you're, when you're done now?
I'm done.
So on Panorama, which is, I find that very fascinating too. Now I'm a visual person, so I think that's the trending stuff. When we, as a district, if a student is absent, I know that the office calls and stuff and then they say, well, I don't know why they're not there or whatever. What is, what is that, I don't know what I want to say here, like, what's the process?
Responsibility?
Yeah, like, what's the responsibility, district? If I was a parent and calling and said, well, I sent, I sent my son to school, I don't know why he's not there.
Well, we would work with the family to investigate where that student went. And so I mean, it's kind of situational, John, but I can think of a couple of different circumstances where in past experience that happened. And then we would work with the family to backtrack and figure out where that student was.
Yeah, and I'm thinking for someone who's chronically, yeah, chronically absent, like, well, I thought they were going to school. You know what I mean, like, and where we could see the trending and what they're going to school.
Yeah, and again, it's all about the partnership. So if it was more of a kind of a habitual thing that you were talking about, that's why we make that point of contact, right? And then the families, like, well, send them every day. And that watches that mutual kind of dive into that to figure out where they're going, where, how they're spending their time. You know, what are the hurdles and barriers? And then we would work out a plan to support the student.
You know, I take back, play back, we used to have, we would call it the truth, you know. Or we had dean of students that are on a point, it was not unusual to see the dean of students at Wegmans.
Right.
Wondering who was there.
Right. Yeah, I remember those.
So I I I don't think we have those anymore. I just didn't know that, that that's what fascinating is. This is like that real type data that's in, in front of you, you can have it pop, that says, hey, this person's trending now, let's get on this right away. Instead of, oh, yeah, John had a buddy there a couple days in, so I like it.
Yeah, it just really puts it in your face and it kind of, it really goes along with our, in the line with our equity and access. And really, there's no bias around it. It really just shows us the data of who the kids that are trending downward or aren't coming to school every day.
I like it.
And making sure we do something about it.
Our alarm, you know, so your alarm ones, like my.
They actually call it an early warning system, yeah.
The issues around the absenteeism, though, you can see how it correlates directly with the pandemic. And I think it's been more not necessarily kids saying they're going to school and not being here, it's kids not going to school period. And you can also see what's encouraging is that that's trending back to pre-pandemic numbers. And I can, I can say, like, just from personal experience, that our district has done a good job of working with families around absentee issues. Around that being, not necessarily kids that say they're going to school. But just kids that do not want to go to school as a result of that. And I'm glad that we're tracking that data and that we're we're doing what we can. And I also know that there were supports in place in the summer to address some of that absenteeism going into the new school year. And that is very helpful as well. So, so that is, that's all interrelated and I, and I, this is really encouraging.
There there is a fourth component to panorama, and it's the whole SEL module. And that's why the committee picked it. Because it's it's not just looking at data, but it's really enlisting like the the why behind all of these pieces. It's asking students SEL questions, like, what do you need to get better access to school? Why, why are you having behavioral concerns? And how can we help you?
Sure.
With with regards to the suspension data, where are we on increasing our implicit bias, implicit bias training?
So Michelle has been extending the implicit bias training around our hiring. Our building principals last year through the week have been really working with Kelly and Chrissy. Through our leadership meetings, created plans within their buildings to implement this year. And it targets different, different, I would say, components of that. And now they're implementing some of that training within their buildings. And so that's going to be part of their professional development and action plans within their buildings this year. And really, we kind of introduced you to that this summer, you know, related, again, that's why I referenced Michelle with hiring. There's a lot of different types of bias, right? And part of it really helps, we have to understand, well, develop that awareness, that sense of understanding of those different types. So that when we see that or feel that, we can act on that, right? And so that's what's happening now. But I do want to just compliment Kelly and, you know, the process that she went through, the people that she enlisted. And it makes me think of, you know, when Chrissy came to me and suggested that we kind of rethink that position of data. She had a vision and she did a great job of articulating that, right? And partnering, marrying really the the data thread with the assessments and interventions was just genius. And we're seeing that pay dividends now. And over the summer, our administrators, they were like kids in the candy store with this panorama. They really were, and the teachers, we brought in all of our lead teachers.
Which was also genius.
Well, maybe so, that would be that. But honestly, we're having to bridle them because they just, they want to get out of the chute and start running with these things. And as Kelly had alluded to, started a conversation with the administrators where they're now talking about the systems and structures they have in place for, let's say, attendance, right? And, you know, look, we have ten million, seven different administrators in the district. You know, things have kind of, they've shifted, they've kind of grown a little bit wild. And so we're able to bring those things back and realign those things and also strengthen and fortify those. And it's what I really liked about panoramas, it gave ideas of really quick and simple interventions with kids. Whether they were activities, right?
They called for playbook.
Right, I thought that was really great, and people immediately connected to that. So it's really going to be a great tool.
Can I, can I build off of Justin's question now about the suspension data? I mean, I understand that implicit bias is one way to sort of attack that suspension data, which is consistent with the statewide data. Disproportionate rate of students of color being suspended, among those students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. It's all right in line with what we see statewide. But I do like to see that the the number of days students are being suspended has decreased. However, what what are we doing with this data? I mean, implicit bias is one thing. What else, what else are we doing?
Well, those are plans of actions that are that are different principals articulated based on this process last year. So, for example, they're analyzing how they're using the resources more effectively, you know? And to go a little more deeply into that, a great example would be the assistance, okay?
Right, okay, yeah.
So, you know, we're talking about the root causes, the antecedents, and inter- interjecting or providing support earlier in the pathway to maybe some of those disruptions or some of those violations of the code contact, right? And I'm thinking about conflict would be a good example, right? We're we're able to intervene and support students earlier, right? And more consistently before that conflict grows to the point of violence, of violent outbursts, okay? Another point, I mean, so that's one part of it, another part's like substance abuse, right? So we've had our drug and alcohol counseling. We've had to really reconsider our drug and alcohol counseling position and structure. Because as you know, you know, all the bachelor board members in here, and maybe Vicki, you've kind of brushed into this, coming onboard. Four or five years ago, we have, we had a reduction agreement with our students. They violated the the policy on drug and alcohol use. And it, it was, it required twenty, a mandatory twenty-week suspension. Well, that wasn't being supported by the commissioner. So those were reduced, so we couldn't do that. So we really had to rethink how we deliver that, how we engage kids in that. And also hold them accountable for completing, you know, those supports, so.
Any other questions for Mrs. Santora? You have anything left?
Not for me, but I did have one other thing.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just wanted to remind the board, the last retreat that we had, we talked about questions. And so any questions that come out that you have, please send them to me. And the reason why I'm asking for that is, then I'll get the information, make sure everybody gets that, okay? If you email the assistant superintendents directly, I won't have the opportunity to do that. I just want to make sure that I'm.
We won't have to do that for questions we answered here.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I understand if there's any follow-up questions, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, yeah, no, I just wanted to, okay? And do we want to pursue the question, just for my clarity, with the outside placements? Okay, so we'll get that, we'll bring that back, I'll I'll put that in a future.
Part of our all is well.
Yep, you got it. Even our students that are in those placements.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next on the agenda is report of leadership staff personnel, Dr. Johnson.
All right, so Ms. Kramer, it's time to shine here.
Thank you. So tonight for our first read, for the September twenty-first meeting, we have the resignation of certified staff of a school nurse. Eight teaching systems, and an education coordinator. We have to have the retirement of an administrator of special assignment for twenty-eight years, four months of district service. We have the resignation of a classified teacher aide. We have team appointment status of a guidance clerk full-time to secretary to the assistant principal full-time. A secretary to the assistant principal full-time to current doctor clerk full-time. Guidance clerk full-time to attendance clerk full-time. A teacher aide part-time to secretary to the assistant principal full-time. Cleaner full-time to teacher aide full-time. Food service helper to cook manager full-time. A food service helper to cook full-time. A cook full-time to cook manager full-time, and a help desk assistant full-time to help desk internet coordinator full-time. We have the appointments of our certified probationary staff, of a secondary special education teacher, the substance abuse counselor, two elementary special education teachers, and an elementary teacher as an intervention teacher. We have a long-term substitute two for math. We have a teaching assistant and a part-time, a full-time teaching assistant and a part-time teaching assistant. And then for our classified staff, two part-time teacher aides, a full-time teacher aide, secretary to the principal, health clerk, two guidance clerks, security monitor, and youth assistants. And our at-will-perde employees, we have an elementary long-term substitute one, a science long-term substitute one, a monitor, and a food service helper.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer, any questions on that? So this is a first read, we will anticipate voting on this on our September twenty-first meeting. So if anything comes up, please reach out to Dr. Johnson. Next is fall coaching stipends, may I have the recommended resolution?
Be it resolved that the fall coaching stipends dated September seventh, twenty twenty-three be approved as presented.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Mortel, may I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, Dr. Johnson. Yep, I'll throw it right over to Ms. Kramer.
So thank you. This is, in addition to the previously approved coaches for our fall season, we have filled the remaining positions. They are in red on the agenda, red font on the agenda for you for approval of this evening.
Any questions or comments on that? Miss DeBate?
Just, it's more an overall question. How do, how's the breakdown decided of what sports get what coaching assignments, I'll say? You know, each football has, varsity has so many, JV, and I know it's by the size of teams in in specialty areas. I'm just wondering, like, if you look in the contract, there's, there's levels and steps for coaches that not necessarily on the schedule. Does that work with the the program? I'll say that head coach, we always say the head coach, the varsity is kind of like the program administrator. You know what I mean, that's the way we look at it there, and they kind of run the verticality of the program. Do they work with Kim to say, hey, I think I need an extra coach, these are some data points? And then look at, to bring that to probably your office to say, oh, you know, maybe this is a good idea, can we expand it more? And or how is it like, how would we, how does that happen? So it comes to us to say, well, we fill this position.
Right, so if we have to split modified and form a second team or something like that?
Therefore, some team decides they want an assistant coach. And they think they might need one.
Right, and that would be through, and Michelle, you can chime in. Specifically speaking about splitting a team, you know, they'll bring the numbers, they have the conversations you would discuss. And that especially at the yoga ages, because we're still developing those students, their skills, their interests. We want to retain, you know, as many as we can for that experience. We very often will support that second team. If it's an additional coach, then they have to bring, right, their rationale for that to Kim. Kim will process that, she supports that, she brings it to us, right? And then we'll process that, process that, we'll consider that. And if we support it, I'll make the recommendation to you folks. But it has to be something, and this is, we're pretty firm on this as far as the budget. If it's an addition, then it really needs to be through the budget planning process. And if it's not, then there has to be very strong rationale tied to things like safety would be one of the athletes to add that additional coach. Or maybe something, a change in, right, some programming, programming that was unexpected. Michelle, would you add to that?
Yeah, exactly, it's definitely that recommendation, data, and then gathering with the safety of students of program.
So have we, like, looked at the positions that we have now and, like, reviewed, are they still correct? Are they right, I'll say right sizes, you know what I mean? Let's, we have, we've had these positions and they're there, we have this number of coaches and assistant coaches. And then, like, if we looked at it and said, oh, that is still the correct number. Look, I'll give you an example, I want to give you an example. Boys and girls basketball, okay, is, varsity basketball has an assistant coach. There's six, there's five players on the court, okay? There's twelve people usually on the team, roughly somewhere in that number. Volleyball has six players on the court, no assistants, they have volunteers, okay? And they have fourteen people on the field. So I'm wondering, how did, at what point was there a decision in basketball needs an assistant varsity coach? And was other sports, soccer, whatever, looked at? You know, soccer, I think, has one, do they need two? I don't know, that's not my area. I'm just wondering the process of how we review this and how it would come to us. Obviously, through your office area.
Especially from an equity lens, as far as boys teams versus girls teams, are they having the same number of coaches on a boys team versus a girls team?
I think we're, I think at that level, we're there pretty kind of close, Justin. I mean, I haven't done the number, but I just looked at, like, there's unpaid volunteers. And what does that look like? But yet there's an assistant on the basketball, there is an assistant on volleyball, both boys and girls.
So my answer isn't going to be?
And I don't, I just wondered if you could explore that.
The answer, yes. And we can, as Justin had mentioned, I can't say that in my conversations with Michelle, and maybe you can remember, or with John or John before you, since I've been here. That we've done an audit to make sure that across the genders, that there's equity in coaching. I believe that there is, as John was alluding to, but I, we haven't done that, we can do that. The part that you're referencing, John, a poor answer that I have would be the programs that have the assistants are the ones that historically have regionally. The ones that don't historically haven't. And they haven't made a proposal. So the fact that they haven't made a proposal to recommend that, that's either, in my point of view, a reflection that they maybe felt that that wasn't something that would be supported because they don't see that, right? Or maybe it reflects the fact that for their particular sport, they don't deem that to be necessary. But again, we haven't had that conversation.
Well, and that, because the head coaches and programs know, they'll process if they think they want to do that, or they want to make a case, that was the.
Yeah, we can, we can ensure that they do, yeah, we can do that, absolutely.
Any other questions on that, comments on coaches? All right, all those are better? Any post? That is six ones. Next is extracurricular segments, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, so before I turn this over, Michelle, just to set the table for.
Yeah, so before I turn this over, Michelle, just to set the table for everyone here, at some point, nonetheless, here? Here, in conversations with our attorney, we talked about extracurricular advisors, and the fact that it's contractual, but we hadn't historically, right, made those recommendations to you as the board. So they weren't technically, they were contractually allotted positions, but you didn't formally approve those every year. So they recommended that we do that. So we're doing that. Michelle, over to you.
Yes, so tonight, this is our first read. We are in process of continuing to fill positions. Again, these are positions that are within the West Carolina Teachers Association agreement with the district. And we have just also been a little bit, so our contacts have really worked through our equity lens, personal alignment across our extracurriculars, but we are still in the middle of that since we're already in an agreement with WITA. So we, we worked very closely with the unit to make sure that we're able to continue to work through the, through what our extracurricular committee worked on last year, tied to the strategic plan, while also having these in place. So the positions that are filled are here for you tonight for the first read, and then by our second read, we hope to have most of these filled and finalized, now that we're here at the beginning of the year. So the ones, the white items that are highlighted in the orange are not filled yet, and then the ones that are gray are just titles, and you'll see classification groups. Advisors that fall under certain classification groups, and then you'll see the names. And these are for our buildings, grades four through twelve.
Any questions or comments on that?
Sorry, process question. Are these, like, when we have open teaching positions, they're posted internally, are these all posted? And then if someone had, is it a yearly appointment, or if you did it last year, you can kind of continue on? And then what mechanism do we use to, I'm not saying grade are effective, but making sure they're being effective in their position?
Great question, because we, that is something that we have worked really hard on. We had our extracurricular committee last year, developed a process and procedural handbook in terms of, there's a district review process that will continue around extracurricular offerings that are there, as well as building review, annual building review processes, and then within that, how do individuals, students, or staff members request a club, it's always planning teams we'll be using to evaluate. Starting next year, we are going to a more formal process of posting these as part of that, because prior to this, that is a piece that we, you know, uncovered through, through our work, it was different in every building, there are some where people have just always done that and haven't been open to new people, so there's a posting process that is coming in place. So again, we're, we're in the middle, we're in a pilot year, per se, with that manual and those different pieces, but and there are guidelines in place now in terms of requirements for our advisors to show club participation, that they're meeting regularly, they have a reflection that goes to, and they're all being connected to that recently, so.
This might also be a good time, do you want to introduce, or shifting to the volunteers?
Yeah, we clarified, this year, and we're starting, if we have volunteers, similarly to what we do with our coaches, our coaching volunteers, they're vetted, and they're vetted on a different level because they also have to get a volunteer coaching certification, and so with that, there becomes fingerprinting, there's, you know, there's requirements that are there. But our volunteers that volunteer regularly, so we attributed it to volunteers for coaching almost like a season. So if you think of some of our, our club extracurriculars that we have, there are some where we have regular volunteers that are there at almost every event, quite often working directly with students. There will not be an application process, the building principal will first approve, there are references to call for those. And we're not talking like a volunteer that's just coming in maybe to do a presentation or help out one time, but again, regular volunteers. And then we will also be, not only using the Raptor system as one layer of security with them, we'll also be doing fingerprints. And then there's going to be very clear guidance, and there's an outline for our advisors on how volunteers are used, they're used here on campus, and now, now we'll match them.
Great.
So the volunteers will be, right, going to you for the.
But most of these people are, are staff.
Most of them are staff, but they make it volunteers that come in and support your extracurricular, so it's for that group.
I got it.
Yeah.
And then just one question to the superintendent of war clerk is, my wife's listed on here? Has she received a stipend? I just need to know, can I vote at the next meeting? And I was, I know we've talked about this before, and I can't remember where we asked the attorney, okay, thank you. I just wanted to not get into the next meeting, we kind of, I don't know. Pretty good, and not to give John, if she had to look it up sometime.
Thank you for being proactive. Any other questions or comments on this? So as Ms. Kramer said, this is a first reading, and we will vote on it on the twenty-first. Next is new business, and the first item under new business is the New York State School Board Association Convention Discussion. So the convention is being held in Buffalo, October twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, I believe is the date, yeah? And no one has emailed me saying they're interested, is anyone interested in going? That's probably our first conversation, I know Mr. Bay, Mr. Sullivan, myself have all gone in the past, and it's a really great.
I would like to, especially being new, I think it would be great.
It is.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great convention, and you get an award at the end of the year for the credit.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
But it really is, there's a, like, I went last year with Dr. Johnson, went through a lot of the diversity track type sessions they had there that were fantastic. We've had members of our district leading procession.
Mr. Bay presented in the past?
Very well, you know, very well attended, and it's a great experience.
Yeah, okay, so I would definitely.
Excellent, excellent. I am not going to be able to attend because I'm presenting at a different conference on the other side of the state that same weekend. Anybody else interested at all?
I would be interested, but if there's somebody else, I've gone to the last two in person, so I don't want to take a space for somebody.
And we, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we have funds in the budget allocated for that specifically, so we should be.
Dr. Johnson, you planning on going?
And I would come with that.
Okay, that, I just was. So, Vicki, do you want to go the whole time or just for a day, or?
So I was actually, I wasn't sure if I should talk about this now, but I was in the email, John, because I'm actually coming back from, I'll be flying in from North Carolina, so I won't be able to actually get there until, like, midday Friday. So I wasn't sure if, like, I could do, like, per session, how that works, but I definitely can't either for the entire time, but I figured if I could get there half-day Friday and then Saturday, right, like,
Absolutely, we can totally make that happen.
Yep.
So, Mrs. Lustig can coordinate with you, the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth.
Yes, October.
And then, while you're looking, John, there's a separate piece to this that in the past, the annual business meeting for NISBA has been during the conference, but they've now decoupled that. And now it is a Zoom, and as NISBA members, we are entitled to send a voting delegate to that Zoom to vote basically on the positions that NISBA is going to take in the coming year. That, I popped it up somewhere here, is going, that Zoom itself is going to be on the sixteenth of October at four P.M., and it's on Zoom. If anyone is interested in being a voting delegate, I'd welcome any interest in that.
I think we should use people that have had experience.
I like, I like where you're going. But I, I would love to share the experience.
So Matt was our voting delegate here in Rochester, Aaron.
Yeah.
I think Matt, you went, I don't know.
I was happy to have.
Someone else.
Did you?
Oh, Matt, Vicki, we watched Matt, didn't we?
We literally have a panel. So they don't do the panel anymore, it's all Zoom-based. But if anybody's interested in that, and we don't have to decide that right this second.
What day is that?
That's a Monday.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The sixteenth, at four P.M. Also, the Area Two Resolutions Committee is meeting on October seventh at nine A.M., that's a Saturday, on Zoom. You don't have to be the voting delegate to go. And hopefully all of you have gotten an email from NISBA with the resolutions book. I think there's fifty-six proposed resolutions, this is a lot. But what happens at this meeting is all of the different districts from Area Two will come together and talk about if they think NISBA should support or not support particular resolutions. And there's quite a wide range of resolutions, this year I had a chance to skim the book the other day. And I've personally found that meeting very interesting because Area Two is much wider, much bigger than Monroe County School Board, so we get a lot of different perspectives as far as what different school districts are going to. We got into a great conversation one time about whether or not firearms should be allowed in student vehicles on campus because half the students were like hunting as soon as school ended, and that was like, you know, we were like, that's not something we would do. Yeah, exactly.
We know it's other tiers, so.
So that's, if anybody's interested in that, you know, I can get you the details. If anyone wants to be voting delegate, we'll need to decide that before the meeting, obviously, and coordinate with Jenna to get that signed up.
Has any, I have not reviewed all of the, has anybody reviewed the resolutions real quick?
I skimmed them.
Is there any hot buttons that you would think that we would, as a board, like, so the nice thing about being a voting delegate is you get to also go to the convention, and you can advocate, like, we've actually, way back, when I first was on the board, we, for component retesting, we actually did a resolution, and Becky went to New York City and presented on the floor the resolution that Westeran Quaid wrote, and, you know, and then they debated it, but this is, they don't do that so much anymore. But was there any that we as a district, and I say Westeran, but Aaron, this would be some of your feedback, because a lot of those resolutions has to do with kind of, I'll call it, your side of the line, you know what I mean? Like, oh, we want to, we support some program, you know what I mean? And then you, if we find that there's definitely a hot topic that we want to advocate for, you know, we should, we should send someone, I'm willing to be considered, I don't have to be, and I don't, I'm not saying I don't want to. I want to give everybody an opportunity.
I think at one point, since I've been here, we brought those resolutions back to a meeting and reviewed those, and we had flagged anyone that people wanted to have a discussion about here to decide how you felt as a group. Is that something that you would want to do?
I'll leave it up to the board here. But it's only if we have a voting delegate. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we combined those with the ones that we were interested in, also with the ones that came out of that Area Two meeting that were not unanimous, to kind of take an extra look at. So I think my suggestion is, you know, we have two weeks until our next meeting, if everyone can take an opportunity to read through these resolutions, see if anything jumps out at you. You know, if anyone wants to be the delegate, we can regroup on the twenty-first and and if anybody needs a copy of the resolutions book, let me know, because I have it up here.
I was going to say, I was just going to suggest, can you send it to Jenna? We'll post it in next, we'll post it somewhere where everybody can access it.
Yeah.
Is that good?
Perfect.
Jenna, you want?
No.
And then, Jenna, do we, I, I can't remember, is it individual members go, or do we buy, like, a board? I'll say a board pass, you know what I mean, like, and then board members can go? I can't remember how it works.
So we get the member fee because we are.
And then we pay for each member.
So in the spirit of conferences, I don't know if I'm really getting crazy here, but I, after I was looking at the conference coming up in October, then I sort of went down the driver's trail of looking at the national conference. Does anybody ever attend that?
It's not that we can't, I know you've gone in the past, right?
There's groups from the region that go, but sometimes they travel together.
There's whole boards that.
Yeah.
There are.
There was, I mean, I don't know if they still, there was boards that went every year, as a whole. They use it as a retreat and a board.
Yeah, it is.
I just wasn't sure if, like, there's, if people have gone in the past and found value of, like, seeing other states and regions and what, you know, what they're doing, and I just wasn't sure if that was something that we've done in the past.
That's a great question, absolutely.
I've never done.
Yeah, we have not done it historically, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we can't.
With education being so much, I'll say, state-focused by state, you know? And I know there's, obviously, the national level would advocate for all children equal education. I'm wondering if there's different at the national level, how does that, like, when we come together as a state, we're kind of dealing with all the same rules, right? As a district, I'll say, districts, where on the national level, I don't know how that, if you make.
Yeah, so I think it's been three times, and from my perspective, the benefit was it just takes it to the next level as far as some of the resources, I'm thinking of school safety, health, social emotional wellness, technology. It's, you know, again, you're at the state stage here, but on the national level, it just pulls in so many more resources and just, a body of research just seemed to be a lot higher. Yeah, so it was beneficial, but to John's point, there was other things too, there were sessions that were more state-driven, I'd walk in, maybe some things on contracts or maybe budgeting, I was like, you know, I'd get up and go to another one because it really wasn't applicable.
Right, right.
But, and it looks like that's in April in New Orleans, we have some time to figure that out.
Yep, so the only difference is the price goes up by a hundred dollars if we don't register by the nineteenth.
For this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
We don't meet till the twenty-first.
Right, so you would have to pass the resolution today?
Our policy is that we have to pass the resolution.
Yes.
Which one?
So do we want to put a resolution on the table? I know Jenna loves when we do this. Yep, she's always downloading back your mind. So Vicki, you want to go, you said you would be interested in going, did you say you were interested, or are you looking?
I would just make a resolution that we're going to attend, and then.
Okay, and then we.
And that would give us our flexibility, and we can, I mean, if Vicki's going to be the only one to go, I can, I would go on Saturday. But I don't have to go, like, we wanted to run it up together or whatever, I don't know if you're planning to stay in Buffalo Friday night. I mean, I, my thing was, I'd drive up Friday, Saturday morning, come back Sunday, Saturday night. But again, I'm open and I don't have to go. I'm sure my wife can find plenty of work on her own, I'll serve you. It's just about raking time.
Why do you think?
Sometimes it's about the time to rake all the leaves.
Mrs. Lustig, do you have a sample resolution for that?
Sure, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westeran Quaid Central School District approves the attendance of board members at NISBA's annual convention education expo, October twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Perfect, may I have a move? Thank you, Mr. Bay, may I have a sample? Thank you, Ms. Mortow. All those are better? That is seven zero, Miss Lustig.
So we just need to decide by the nineteenth?
Yep, perfect, so we'll get that coordinated, and we will move on unless there's any other comments on this. Kind of got to find board docs. All right, next is textbook recommendation, and this is a first read, so I will turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
I'm going to turn it over to the speaker to explain.
Yeah, so we have a read aloud text that our kindergarten teachers who engage in curriculum writing this summer selected and identified as part of a kindergarten humanities unit, which is focused on identity and some of the social studies standard at that level around sense of self and how experiences help to shape that sense of self, as well as the common experiences that children, families, and communities engage in, particularly around cultural similarities and differences. So this is a great story about a child who is adopted and, you know, what they experience when that is noticed by their classmates, and the pride they have in sharing that, that they're experiencing. And so it really was something that they can hear the teachers about, would be great, read aloud to go with the humanities unit that they just wrote this summer. So it is up, or I haven't heard a copy.
So it is up for, I have a hard copy here, thanks to Ms. Crystal and the team, if anybody would like to read and is up for review and potential approval, we'll see. So is there any pickers?
Yeah, pass it right around. Any questions on that? So that is a first read and we will anticipate voting on that on the 21st. Next is a field trip request, may I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the field trip request for date students to travel to Washington, DC from 5:324 through 5:524 be approved as presented.
May I have a motion?
Don't move.
All right, everybody wants, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Vay with a second, how about that? Dr. Johnson?
So you have the request form there for your review. This is our kind of classic historical Washington DC trip for the integrators and it's pretty much outlined, as it has been in the past, and just a couple of highlights, you know, we have our standards around student to staff ratios, so that's in place. They're going to be working out supports through fundraising, some of those opportunities for students. And from my point of view, everything was in place. We're excited to offer this to our students again this year, your support hopefully. And so if there's any questions, I'll take that.
Glad to see that. It's back in its full pre-pandemic form. I know we've had some students that missed that opportunity, but a lot of kids, even graduates that you talked about, they'll talk about the eighth grade. And Michelle, you were the principal at DAK, you'll take a lot of pride in this, that it is a lot of memory and friendships that are made on that trip. And they get to see some great experiences in places.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all is in favor. That is seven zero, Miss Lustig. Next is the approval of the 2024-25 budget guidelines and timeline, may I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the 2024-25 budget guidelines and timeline be approved as presented.
Dr. Johnson, oh, any motion, sorry. Motion first. Thank you, Ms. Porenval, may I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Conner, now Dr. Johnson.
Yep, so we introduced these at the budget, at the summer workshop in August and we discussed some suggested tweaks to these, which you can see in red. I'll turn it over to Mr. Brennan if you want to talk about some components specifically, Mr. Brennan.
I mean, one of those type of staffing, obviously looking at start new with schools, looking more closely versus averages across all grades and the building themselves, make sure that we're hitting those targets. And then we also talked about for leadership, that if we make any recommendations in our budgets regarding, in addition to leadership, then we, that'd be based on their analysis as a point here.
Yep. And any questions?
Just one question. The last part of the document talks about budget variance and supportive of that, right? And I remember from, I forget how many years ago, it's not only 10 or 11, you know, we used to be, I'll say 91, 92.
Yep.
You've been able to help us gear that to 95. Is that still a good pushing to work within that, that I think you shoot for like that six, four to six percent, you know, we identify, that's still comfortable with the conditions and everything like that, so we make sure that.
Yeah, let's think of this enough, various for our loans and also plan for the future at the same time, so it's worked well for our projections. Good.
Any other questions on this? So you've gotten all those appear. That is seven and zero, Miss Lustig. Next is approval of the 2023-24 focus areas, may I have the recommended action?
Be it resolved that the 2023-24 focus areas be approved as presented.
May I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Vargas-Crumm, may I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Porenval. Dr. Johnson?
So again, we introduced this over the summer at our workshop. We touched upon it again at our retreat. This is tied to our strategic plan, we're near the 3, so working with our key administrators, we were able to articulate tasks, action steps, or our district goals this year. This is just kind of a summary overview because we have a historical focus area document so that gives us that reference, but we also have the more in-depth management plan posted on our website as well. So.
Any questions on that?
Aaron, thank you to you and your leadership team, to all the work that goes into, you know, we have these four focus areas, right? But all the stuff that goes into, I'll say, the management plan and the actual date, I'll say the day to day and how it gets to the students and everything, that's a big lift, isn't it? You guys do great work on that and you keep us very well informed, so thank you.
Best of all. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all is appear. That is seven zero, Miss Lustig. Next is approval of therapy dog, may I have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that the request for a therapy dog made by Jessica Hess and as recommended by the superintendent of schools be approved as presented.
May I have a motion? Swung by Mr. Vay, seconded by Ms. Porenval, Dr. Johnson.
So a few years ago, we created some administrative regulations to properly process requests for therapy dogs and also to maintain those. And so Ms. Hess has gone through that process, it's evidence that she's met all those benchmarks with Juno, the plan is in place, and so we're excited to make that recommendation to you. I think it's gonna add another really high quality resource for our students, the dogs that we have across the district currently and certainly being an impact with students and staff. And again, just excited to potentially add another.
Any questions or comments?
Just one request. At the new staff celebration, can we make sure Juno comes? Remember, what was the dog from Brooklyn?
Bean.
Bean, that they didn't. I'm just saying, it's, it's saying it to me. I was reading this, I'm like, I can't wait, I'm waiting for Jeff to, like, sort of, I feel today, you know?
Bean was in the new staff picture.
You took the words out of my mouth. The process shouldn't be amended to ensure it enters the board introduction.
Yep, there we go. We had that same conversation, the agenda's there.
No, I think this is great, I mean, from what I've heard, it's great, you know, for the atmosphere of the building and it's so.
Any other questions or comments on that? Very exciting. All those appear. That is seven zero. Next is the consent agenda, may I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westerhan Quaid Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes G2 through G7.
May I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Conner, may I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Porenval. On tonight's consent agenda is the recommendations of the Committee on Specialification, the approval of the APPR plan, the approval of APPR lead evaluators and evaluators, approval of textbook, all are welcome here, approval of textbook, the most magnificent thing, and approval of a donation. Are there any items on the consent agenda on which a board member would like removed to have a specific discussion? Are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have removed to vote on separately? Any feedback on the consent agenda as a whole? I know, Ms. Vargas-Crumm, you had some textbooks, anything on those?
I did, some Starbuck, they were amazing. I loved the all are welcome, it was just the perfect, you know, sell, like, of the beginning of school year book. And this one was really great on perseverance and great adjectives in there.
Yes.
Loved both of them.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all is appear. That is seven zero, Miss Lustig. Brings us to future meetings, will we have future meetings?
Yes, we have the new teacher and TA recognition on September 21st at 6:00 PM at DAK, followed by business meeting at 7:00. And then we've got audit committee on October 5th at 6:00 PM here at District Office, followed by study session at 7:00.
Excellent, thank you. And I think everyone had it there placed in Monroe County School Board's calendar for the year, so there's lots of events on there, just make sure you review that for anything you might want to attend. Any of the standing committee meetings, labor relations, information exchange, those are open to all board members, even if you're not the voting representative of those committees. So just let Mrs. Lustig and Nancy Pickering at the Association know that you're interested in going. Next is executive session, do we have a reason to go into executive session tonight?
Yes, to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Thank you, Ms. Vargas-Crumm, may I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Conner, get you to it. All those appear. That's seven zero, Miss Lustig, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting.
Yep, thank you.